I.
I. Board member Mott Singer, what is your vote?
Yay.
Board member Burke?
Yes.
Board member Breimer?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is discussion item B, which is the superintendent search update by Deion Jenkins, our general counsel. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert Hayes, members of the board, and Dr. Harrison. Tonight, I wanted to revisit the conversation about getting started with the superintendent search process. At the last board meeting, I provided an overview in general of what the process entails and provided some recommendations for next steps. I also included lists of some executive search firms that often work with higher ed and K-12 institutions. The North Carolina School Board Association is the association that conducted the search the last time in 2019. But I included some other firms that have been recommended. BWP and Associates, Isaacson Miller, McPherson and Jacobson, and Hazard Young, all of which have experience and have been consulted previously with regard to superintendent searches and other executive search firms. At the last board meeting, there were some questions about wanting to get information about what other North Carolina school districts these firms have worked with. And so I had a little bit of information I wanted to update you about that. And then this is your opportunity to have discussion amongst yourselves about how you would like to proceed in that manner. I also wanted to let you know that Jevon Bonner Reed, who is our Chief Human Resource Officer, is here today in case there are questions about what role she could play or we could play using internal resources to conduct this search, just in case there are questions. We want to make sure that you're aware of all of your options. And so with regard to the North Carolina School Board Association, they are the association that handles, I would say, the majority of superintendent searches in North Carolina. Currently, they are assisting Chapel Hill Carboro, or they have assisted Chapel Hill Carboro, Weldon City, Wayne County, and Sampson County. Those are some current open searches that they have listed on their website. But in the past year or so, they've also been involved with the superintendent search for Ashboro City, Carteret County, Davie County, Johnston County, Jones, Martin, Nash, Hanover Orange, and Washington Counties. BWP and Associates, I actually spoke with one of their executive representatives and kind of got an initial interview or information about what services they could offer. He did also provide an informal quote for what the fees would be to assist the Winston -Salem-Side County School Board in a superintendent search. And based on information I've been able to find about them, they have participated in superintendent searches all over the country, but specifically for North Carolina, Alamance-Burlington Schools, Asheville City Schools, Dare County, Moore County, and they have Spartanburg City Schools, which is a school I'm not familiar with. When it comes to Isaacson Miller, Isaacson Miller does not have an office in North Carolina, but they assist entities across the country. Specifically for North Carolina, I did not find where they have recently worked with any public K-12 institutions. But they do have listed on their website several charter schools as well as North Carolina higher ed institutions that they've worked with. For example, North Carolina Outward Bound School, which is in towards the, I think it's in Asheville, I believe, UNC School of the Arts with their Dean of Filmmaking, UNC Wilmington, and UNC Greensboro, as well as Duke University in some of their higher level executive positions. And then McPherson and Jacobson, which actually reached out to us and sent a brochure, which I sent to you earlier today. They have worked with Charlotte Mecklenburg in 2016 and Wake County in 2012. And I have provided for you at least an estimate of what their fees would look like based on the estimate that I obtained in 2019. And then lastly, Hazard Young, Ate and Associates, they're based out of Illinois. I've been able, I was able to find that Guilford County used them several years ago, but I've not been able to determine any other North Carolina school districts that they've worked with in recent years. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or comments about the information provided about the search companies. As I mentioned before, there's, you know, there's a couple of options here. If the board is inclined to use a search firm, you're more than happy to either select informally based off the information you've provided. You also have the option to issue a more formal request for proposals and ask any interested entity to submit a proposal to you. You could interview them, you could go through a selection process that way. Or you could determine to do it informally and have me reach out to one or more of the individuals on that list, or if there's any others that have been provided to you, I'm happy to do that as well. And of course, the final option is we could utilize internal resources to conduct a search using information that was gathered as a part of the search process in 2019. As I mentioned, Ms. Bonner Reed is here if you have questions about that. It's my understanding from talking with Ms. Bonner Reed that she is affiliated with several national networks, the Broad Organization and some others, and obviously is in the recruiting field and has contacts and networks that she could utilize to advertise and recruit if you wanted to use internal resources for this process. And so I'm happy to take any questions, or I'll just, I'll turn it over to Ms. Woodbury for further discussion.
Yes, so I think we, I would definitely like to kind of get insight from Ms. Bonner Reed. I do wonder if there are any legal implications around if we use a private firm versus using our public internal process with the accommodation of this personnel issue and we can't release the information of candidates and so.
Well, so whether we use an external search firm or utilize internal resources, it would all be confidential personnel information. So we would treat it the same regardless, if that's what you're asking. And of course, we would have anyone who's involved in the process internally. Typical practice is to have them also sign a confidentiality statement so that there's not any information about who's interested and who's applied that gets released and shared with anyone who doesn't need to know that information. Okay. In all transparency, I don't, I told her about this today, and so I don't think she has a presentation or anything prepared, but I think she's prepared to at least answer your questions about what services she could assist with.
Okay. Even if you do decide to go with a search firm, I am more than happy to support that effort. I'll be highly involved based on whatever your needs are. In order to do that, I've worked with firms before. Before coming into working at school district, I was a recruiter at Goldman Sachs. So I've worked with people at various different levels. In terms of really being able to attract people to this opportunity, I've already heard from people that are interested and with networks like the Wallace Foundation, with networks like the superintendent, the National Superintendents Association, and Broad, I'm actually a Broad alum. I do feel that we could use our own network within marketing this opportunity. And you did a lot of the hard work a year ago in terms of, my understanding is you probably did a profile, you probably did all the, all that work that could be modified and updated to today's needs, and we could use our network to find really, really good candidates. I've also, when I was at CMS, I wasn't involved. However, I witnessed some of the superintendent changes. There were three or four while I was there. And I just feel like an internal organization could do just as well with finding really, really good candidates.
Ms. Bonner Reed, why do you think that, and this is of course your opinion, but why do you think that, you know, larger school districts generally will prefer one of the search firms over internal support? As you know, when we did our search previously, we didn't have an HR person. So we just didn't kind of have the option internally to have the district support internally the process. But now you're here with all of your expertise, but still, we know that, you know, across the state and this country, you know, these firms exist because a lot of the urban school districts decide to use them over internal resources.
I think it's capacity of the organization in terms of being able to capacity to do the work that's necessary that leads people to go to firms. It's also seeing that others are utilizing a firm. It's become kind of common practice at this point. I also, it also depends on what type of search they're doing. If they're doing one more local, one more national, they may seek somebody that has more a national pull. However, I do think with, you know, the experience that I've had and the contacts that more than just myself, that other members of the executive team have, that we could conduct a national search even internally.
Amy?
I think Board Member Parker may be asking a question.
So, and you have some very, very good connections with some of those organizations. So how would you propose that we do a national search with, I mean, what would, and I know you didn't, you haven't presented this presentation, and you're going off your feet. But, but just kind of, you know, ballpark, what would be your game plan for doing a national search? I mean, what mechanisms would you use? What would be?
So first of all, it wouldn't be totally free. I want to put that out there. There's advertisement that you need to do with certain networks, and that there would be a cost associated with that. I would, not only if we did a national, it'd be national, but I'd also look for local connection, because I think that's what retains people, is, you know, not only they've had these great experiences, but, you know, something's drawing them back home. So that is somewhat of the approach that I would take. Again, I think because you did a lot of, a lot of work over the past year, and you had success, great superintendent, so how you went about that and the profile and the work that you did with that, I really think we could leverage what's been done.
Do you have an idea of trying to accommodate the work that we did with the community to kind of come up with? Community input as it relates to looking for our next superintendent previously? And I know Board Member Jones may want to weigh in on this, because she had some thoughts around that too, because I thought it was very robust, and we're right at, if not two years since we last connected and collaborated with the community to come up with some standards that we wanted to use in finding the next superintendent, which yielded, you know, Dr. Harrison.
Well, again, I would actually present that back to you as a question, if you think that's needed to completely do that all over again, or if we could leverage that work and maybe do some piece of, we didn't have COVID two years ago.
Yeah.
So if we need to address that a little bit and tweak what's been done based on how to respond to COVID, how to, you know, crisis management type of thing, which happens even if this didn't happen. So that's, that's my thought. I don't necessarily feel that a complete community outreach is needed again, but I would, if so, then that's what we would do, depending on the needs of the board. And, but I really do feel like we may have to le, lever, we could leverage what's been done before and do some community work to deal with our present day situation and make it more targeted towards that right now.
So if we went internal, how long would it take for you and your team to get before the board and jumpstart the process? So, and I asked that question just out of knowing what happened last time, you know, we chose North Carolina School Board Association, then they started a process that yielded us timelines and blah, blah, blah. I don't recall exactly what, and I see Deion shaking her head. So she, she may be able to, you know, supplement this question, but I would just wonder, you know, once, if we decided to go internal, what would be the next steps from an internal perspective?
I think, I feel like the next steps would be exactly what you're saying, is the timeline. I do have some questions about what you've asked, like, are we going to do a whole profile? There's certain questions I would want to have answered in order to do that timeline. And it depends on, like, to get the timeline within a month, I think we could get a timeline to you. Yet, before that, some meetings about the need, the needs and how you want to approach this would need to happen in order for that to be a realistic timeline. Does that make sense? If I ask you a question?
It does. I do have a question lastly for Deion. I know you said that you sent some price points for the other firms. Was it in this presentation, or you sent it through email to us?
There's a document in the, in your assembly materials. It's a two-page document that has like a summary of the overview, and then their second page has some kind of notes about the individual entities. But if you have a question specifically about one of the executive search firms, I have that with me, but that wasn't your assembly materials. I also will say that in working with the School Board Association last time, just like Ms. Bonner Reed said, there was a lot of work done in those initial phases. Oops, I didn't do that, okay. We do still have a lot of the community feedback that was gathered at that time. In fact, I have a pretty thick file of that information that I could, I'm happy to share with the board, if the board would like to consider what level of community engagement you'd like to have, again, for this time. But I did anticipate, in speaking with Ms. Bonner Reed earlier today, that if the board decided to go internal, that she and I would probably work together on a timeline and some proposed next steps for you. But I also understand that there may be an interest and desire to hear more from the executive search firms in light of proposals and that sort of thing. So we didn't want to jump too far ahead. We just wanted to make sure you knew what all your options were.
I, Chair Woodbury, if I could, I think there are, there definitely was some work done, a lot, and it's still, a lot of that is still relevant. But I do think it's important for us to, well, it might look different around COVID than the work sessions we had the first time, but I think so many things have been accomplished since Dr. Harrison has been here. And we have a strategic plan. We had, we have you, we have, we have, we have a CFO. We have, let me just go on and on, because honestly, we have to be real, I mean, when I look back, there were so many key vacancies that we had within our organization upon Dr. Harrison's arrival. And so I think when you look to it, conversations in the community, a lot of that is reflected, some in there. So I think, to me, it would be important for, for people to be updated on the things that have been accomplished. And then, and I think, you know, we approved a very, a really strong strategic plan. And so I would like that to be our framework as we're looking for feedback from the community as well as with a superintendent. I think that the entire organization worked extremely hard. Dr. Cato really let, you know, really pushed and led that, and, but I know everyone really worked around that. And so I think, too, we have a framework to help us in this next search that did not exist when, when we had to, to do the first one. So, you know, I don't want us to kind of, I think everything should align to that, but I do think we need to talk to the community. And I would, at this point, I think we're in November. I think right now, the key is to get an interim in place. And then as far as the search goes, I think we're, we're kind of in that season of, you know, holidays and different things. I don't know what that looks like with COVID, but I know people, you know, you take time off and, and so I think there's some internal things that we could work on. One, you know, us looking at that, at that strategic plan. Two, maybe if we could put out a quick, maybe RFP or something that's a little more formal so we can see, and we could even do it in-house, so we can actually see what we're getting. The community can also see what approach, so it's very transparent, and then we decide. And then in the meantime of that work taking place, I just want to be real honest that I think also we need to do some work amongst ourselves as a board. And, you know, we're, we have not been, I don't think, the easiest group to work with. I say we, I'm putting myself right in there, but I think to do right for our community, to do right for this district, I think that we also need to do some work while that is going on. And, and then I also would like for us to, so Ms. Burke was very successful in her bid for the city council race, and congratulations, Barbara. And so I think we'll have a new board member coming on, and I think, you know, I would like to, to kind of have the group put together and have some little time to work with each other before we jump right into, you know, the search. So that's why I would like to see more of a formal process so that we can really see what we're, what we're getting, the community can see it, they can ask questions about it, weigh in on it, and, and then we move forward from there. Go ahead.
I agree with what Dana said. I think one of the most important things we've got to do right now is get an interim in place. And I think it's real, real important to get recommendations back from our interim as to where they are and what is happening in our school system during this pandemic. We've never had a time like this, and I think it's really important also to completely involve our community on how our community feels and what they can contribute to the search also. Those are just a few little things that I'm thinking right now, but my main concern right now is to be able to get an interim on and be able to get that interim involved in exactly where we are on the day-to-day operations now.
Chair Woodbury. So if we do put an RFP out there to these other entities, because looking at, at their prices, I guess I'm, I guess I'm a spendthrift, but anyway, I just think, you know, comparing us to a Charlotte Meg, I mean, I would hope that our, our RFP would be a lesser amount. And also, if we do do, if we look at us internally, I also think it's important for us to see exactly and give, you know, Ms. Bonner Reed time to, to assess how much it would cost us as a district to do it in-house. I think that, that's going to be important because, you know, I think a lot of the work that costs a lot of money in these other, the price points that they have in these other districts, I think we've done a lot of that. And so I'm wondering if we can so craft an RFP to just reflect exactly what we need, which would not be all of the things that they typically do when they come in whenever you've had a superintendent for a number of years, and it's been a while since you've gone through that process. So I mean, I mean, is that doable, Ms. Jenkins? I mean, do they take, I mean, do they have this, like, it looked like some of them had a minimum, no matter what you did. So I, you know, I mean, I'm just wondering, how flexible are these, these places? And, and what can we do as a district to try to just really craft what we need if we don't do it in-house?
So I think that there's definitely some flexibility to, to craft our request for proposal based on what you all need as a district. And, and so I do think there's some flexibility there. And I think that most, most if not all of these organizations would probably be willing to tailor their proposal based on what we need, because if the board determines that you don't need the full-blown A to Z, then obviously you don't want to pay the fee for A to Z. So, so yes, so I anticipate definitely some flexibility.
I think maybe then we're kind of moving into the action item of the consideration of the approval of a superintendent search firm selection based on what Board Member Parker suggested with the RFP process that's specific to the needs of Winston-Salem-Side County schools. And we anticipate that our internal team will, you know, be involved. I don't know what the legal ramifications of them putting in a RFP, but anyway, that...
There's not a, there's naturally no requirement at all that you use a search firm. I mean, you can, you can decide how you want to do that in any manner. But I would say, and I wasn't sure how to phrase the action portion, just because I wasn't sure where there was going to be a consensus tonight, but it seems as if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems as if there's some desire to have me prepare an RFP and come back and review that with the board, get the approval for that before issuing it to make sure it covers your needs? Is that, does it seem like that's where we stand?
I, I, well, Board Member Kaplan has a point before we answer that question.
Thank you. I just think we need to slow down and take a little time here and not rush into this process, because it is, it is very important. And I do think that we need to really involve our community leaders, I mean, across the board. I think, you know, for transparency's sake, I think we really need to get their input. And maybe not do it just like we did it last time, but we really, I think, need to involve the community in this. I don't think it should just be just in-house or whatever, but I, I just think we need to slow down and take a little bit of a breather here.
I agree with Board Member Kaplan to the, you know, I think, I think we need to take our time and make sure we like the process. I think as a board member, I, I can reflect back on things that now, that I liked about the first process, that I thought was beneficial, some things that I thought was not so beneficial. And, but I do think that having some, sending something out, or at least, or at least crafting the RFP so that we have something in front of us so that we can kind of look at that, because then I think from that, we can, we're not sending it out yet, we're just asking you to kind of put that together. And then I think that will help us with all the things that you talked about, how to involve the community, what does that look like? But at least right now, have something on paper that we might tweak, but at least get something, I guess, a starting point.
I think that would even be helpful if you're looking internally to do, regardless. And I just also want to add that if we go internally and the desire is to do a full-blown community engagement, we would do that too. I mean, it would just be one of your options.
And Ms. Jenkins, if I remember correctly, back in the dark ages, whenever we were looking at food, at outsourcing food services, that we, internally, they did an RFP as well as the, you know, all of the different companies that we looked at. So they were a part of that RFP process as well, so that, you know, they just came in at what they, they knew they could do it for in-house and internally. So I mean, that, we have done that, like I say, it was the dark ages, but, and to Ms. Kaplan's point, I think that's very important as well. And I think that's a part of what we might look at when we're looking at what we're going to craft for an RFP is how we do, how we want to reach out to the community this time. You know, do we want to do businessly, you know, do we want to take portions of the community rather, since we have heard the community at large, and then maybe, you know, have different formats for different, I mean, to me, that just makes a lot, a lot more sense since, it hasn't been a long time since this board went through that process, so.
So I think we'll take the, sort of the last, this comment from Board Member Burke is, and then we'll go into the action of, I think, what Board Member Parker has on the table with a specific RFP process being approved. Board Member Burke?
Yes. I just wanted to say, I'm in total agreement with Board Member Kaplan. I think that this is a lot of information today, and I think we need to slow down, and we need to take our time, and we need to really think about the information that we have received, take some time to do our own individual research, and then come back. And at that point, I think that we should be ready to take action as far as next steps. But today, we should not be comfortable in moving forward and taking any action. I think that we're just, we don't want to rush this process. This process is too important for us to rush it through. I just heard information today for the first time, and I certainly would like to have an opportunity to take some time, think about it, and do my own research. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're going to move into the action item, which is to consider approval of the superintendent search firm selection. And what I've, maybe Board Member Parker, do you want to make the motion? Do you want me to kind of? Do you want me to kind of summarize what you said with the RFP process?
Well, I mean, I guess I would defer to Deion. Do you need our input before we do the RFP? I mean, to me, that makes more sense for us as a board to, so I guess what I would propose is that we, as a board, slow down the process and, and have a meeting to say what we, what we really need in an RFP process that gives people time to, to, you know, just to think about it because that's exactly right. And we haven't, you know, thought about it, admitted to the board. So I would just say that if, if we need a motion, then that, do we need a motion, Deion, or can we just say?
You could table, I mean, if you're not ready, you could make a motion to table it. And then if I could get some, some feedback just as far as, so what I can get to you all. Or I can send you a survey and you can respond to me individually with kind of what you're looking for. And I can compile a document and share it with the whole board. But, but you can table it if you're not ready to make that decision.
Or can we have a, um, time together to kind of talk about what we, what, what we think we need? I mean, is that, can we have a, um, I mean, what's the direction on that from you?
So you've got a couple of options. You do have regularly scheduled board meetings coming up next Tuesday and the following Tuesday. I mean, if that's too soon, we could, you know, schedule a discussion in December. If that's more time for you to kind of look at the materials that you provided, do some research on your own. Or we could call a special called board meeting at any time so long as there's 48 hours notice.
So I, I would like for us to, to talk about this as a board, but in a different setting, not in here. This is so hard for discussion, I think, and dialogue sometimes for us to try to look and look through the plexiglass dividers and things. But I, I think it's, it's so important as well. And then when you tack that on to an already long agenda sometimes, I just, I just think it's, it's too much. But I, I would, I think that if we could pull back, if we have some of the timeline, some of the information from the last time, I think it would be good for us to, if it could be emailed to us, that we could review that and, and look through that. Because I think that also refreshes our memory of the first time that, you know, we did this not long ago. And then I think too, that, because I think we have to have something to kind of launch those conversations. So around the community, what did we do? And then also from that, you know, craft some ways that there, we're talking about internal searches. We're talking about firms. But I think we could also look into entities or individuals that are actually even in the community and what, what they can bring to this type of search process as well. So, you know, if we could kind of look at what, what we've just recently done, that may help, I think, around that, to Ms. Burke's conversation about doing our own research and just kind of also remembering what we did and take notes of whether we felt it worked or it didn't work and what would we do different, that sort of thing.
So then is there a motion to table this issue of the search firm selection? And, and then we can give Deion some direction?
I make a motion.
Okay, good. Second.
Okay. In this discussion and question period, is there any instruction to Deion about what we would like for her to have in addition to what Board Member Jones have said? So is there anything in addition to?
And Ms. Burke, let's have her hand raised.
Yeah, and I would just say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Barbara.
Board Member Burke?
Okay, I just wanted to say that I agree with Board Member Jones that at some point, I'm sorry, I'm hearing a little background noise. At some point, before we come back again to take action, we do need to have some time that we come together as a board and we discuss all of the options and then our findings from the research. I think we need to have a very serious, critical conversation about this together. And if we could make sure to schedule one before we come back with this on the agenda as an item to take action on, it would, it would really be something that I would highly recommend.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilber, just point of reference. I didn't sit in on the last board superintendent search. I've done them before, but not on this one. So it would be helpful for me. I like the idea of, of finding out what, you know, the process, what you guys did and, and the things you came up with. It would be helpful for me just to see that as well since I wasn't a part of that, that, that search and all that. So I would like for that to be included, Ms. Jenkins, if possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilber.
I was going to ask if you had in your directives, the, putting together the RFP process. Okay, thank you.
I, I can put together a sample process for that. The timeline from the last search, I believe, was emailed to you all maybe two weeks ago, I think, at least.
Yes.
And then earlier today, I did send you the announcement as well as the application that was used for the last search as well. So I, what I'll do is I'll compile the additional information to kind of give you an overview of what happened the last time, share that with you. And, and we can begin working on an RFP process or what that might look like, just as a sample.
Okay.